I call the meeting to order at seven five. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board seeks for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Northham and may be recorded by other local media. So we're here tonight with the Community Planning Commission for a joint meeting to discuss Chapter 3A MBTA communities zoning.
Madam Chair.
Yes. We could stand.
With two flag of the United States of America, as to the Republic of Florida's stand as one nation, American, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I apologize. I got consent, so it's only we gotta be out here in 10 minutes.
Eighteen seconds, I said.
Five ten.
No, no.
Try to make.
So the way, well, first, we're gonna do the appointments to the EDC and then we'll go over what we're gonna do, how we're gonna run the meeting.
Madam Chair, for you.
Yes.
Briefly on the appointments, so I think everyone knows these appointments are, they're jointly appointed, so trying to take care of as many as we can in one sitting while we're all here to avoid further joint meetings. So there is one regular position and two associate positions, so I think we've written it as two motions.
Yep.
And I don't wanna speak for the liaison who's Mrs. Mani Pelli, but I believe she's in agreement with all three of the candidates being appointed, two of which are reappointments and one of which is a new appointment.
Okay.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to jointly reappoint the following individual to the Economic Development Committee for the term and position stated below. David O'Neill, member through March 25, 2027.
Second.
Second?
I heard that.
Got it?
We have a motion and we have a second by Mrs. Mani Pelli. All in favor?
Oh, no, we have a real call.
Dave O'Neill. It's Dave O'Neill.
Dave O'Neill.
Mr. O'Leary?
Dave O'Neill.
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Dave O'Neill.
Mr. Studo?
Dave O'Neill.
Mr. Walner?
David O'Neill.
Chair is David O'Neill. Did you wanna speak on that at all?
I think so. Okay. It's pretty self-explanatory. We want Dave O'Neill back.
Yes, he's been.
CPC has to, CPC has to do their roll call.
So Warren's not here?
Yeah, they need to open the meeting. First day of opening the meeting, yeah. Do you want to give a vote to that?
No, you have to.
I can just open to the one. Okay, I'm opening the meeting for the CPC.
And then they're gonna, and then you're gonna take your votes.
We're gonna vote on the EDC, yeah. I thought you meant on the opening of the meeting.
So you need a roll call.
So this is for David O'Neill to be reappointed.
So just do a roll call to call each of them.
You just say his name.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have Jeremiah?
Jeremiah's not coming tonight. Warren will be here in about four minutes. Um, no, there's one. But you have a warrant, right?
We do have a warrant.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that's all. Roll call vote, right?
David O'Neill.
Yep.
David O'Neill.
Myself, David O'Neill. Bring paper. I oppose.
Okay. And then Madam Chair, I move to jointly appoint the following individuals to the Economic Development Committee for the terms and positions stated below. Caitlin Sullivan, Associate, through March 25, 2027. M. Molly Pike, Associate, through March 25, 2027.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. What was the second name?
Caitlin Sullivan and Molly Pike.
And then, Mrs. Mani Pelli, did you wanna? I'm not the vote.
We'll take the sign.
Mr. O'Leary?
Caitlin Sullivan, Molly Pike.
Mr. Walner?
Caitlin Sullivan, Molly Pike.
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Caitlin Sullivan, Molly Pike.
Mr. Studo?
Caitlin Sullivan, Molly.
And Chair is Caitlin Sullivan and Molly Pike.
You could roll, right? Caitlin Sullivan and Molly Pike.
Yep.
Caitlin Sullivan, Molly Pike.
Myself, Caitlin Sullivan and Molly Pike. Bring paper.
Thank you. So we're gonna start with our town planner. Now we're going to, if you have, if you have anything you've shown us.
Yes.
What's for the evening? We're not taking any public comment tonight?
Anytime during the meeting?
No, not tonight, though. You're welcome.
When will there be an opportunity for public comment on this?
I'm sure we'll have some informational meetings, but those are, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, to you. My understanding is there's a couple of, there'll be a couple of opportunities for the public. First, an informational hearing that the Select Board would have prior to any more Article Town Meeting consideration. Prior to that, the Community Planning Commission would have a hearing on any potential bylaw amendment that is proposed, if any. And then my understanding from talking with the town planner is that the Planning Commission would also have informational sessions as well for the public prior to even that. So I believe that there will be other opportunities. Again, it's not necessarily my jurisdiction, but that's my understanding of the intention.
It's a shame.
So, well, no, no, no. This is a meeting for the two boards to get all the information that's out there, which has changed and is, we have new information. So this is an opportunity for the two boards to have information, give it to us so that we can have an understanding of it and go forward from there. So as you, as you see in our meetings, it takes a long time for us to get things done. So if we had comment coming, and we're gonna have enough to say between each other tonight, so there will definitely be other opportunities for you to do.
How many times has this been on the CPC agenda, roughly? Seems like you guys.
Maybe five or six.
And you have caught public comment at every CPC meeting?
Yes.
So that was five or six opportunities that already have existed for us.
Mrs. Mani Pelli? I don't really think that matters. It's that votes may be taken. I think we, we, we do typically want residents, if it's a resident, come in to speak. We usually, people raise their hands all the time during our meetings inside and outside of public comment. I mean, you can, you can allow and control the time limit on it, it can serve no time.
But I don't think it's fair. It's not everybody knew that.
No, I understand it's not on the agenda.
No, it's not.
I can appreciate it.
I think.
I think Kate's point is we've informally allowed that to happen anyways.
Informally.
Can I just ask one question? I think when we ended it the last time to have a combined meeting, we said we wanted to get council answers to these questions.
Well, I hadn't finished yet.
Is that gonna be the first thing we talk about? Because that should be the first thing.
No, the first thing we're gonna do is, is we're gonna see what Danielle has to show us. And then we will ask Attorney Ickman to answer the questions that we have.
If I may just, you know, it would just be good to clear the air of all the facts, and that's what the attorney is bringing to us. And then that would frame Danielle's presentation much better. So we're not thinking about those things that were like other issues.
Thank you, but I think if we watch this again, we can be jotting down questions we might not have even thought about. There might be more questions after we see this. So I feel like we should see this first and then we can ask Attorney Ickman whatever questions we have.
Good.
So I will hand it over to you.
Would you like to do the lights a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Oh, it comes Warren.
You know when the lights are dimmed? You know when the lights are dimmed?
The Chair of the CPC is on this right now. The caller, yes. Welcome, Mr. Pierre.
Thank you.
We were just gonna start the presentation.
So this is very similar to the presentation that was given at the Slumford meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago. There have been a few updates and clarifications, and I will point that out when, when I come to it. This is really kind of to give everyone a review and an overview of, of the 3A legislation and our proposed response to it. A new section of, a new Section 3A of the Zona Act was signed into law in January 2021, and in 2022, the state released guidelines for communities outlining those new requirements. The new part of the zoning act requires MBTA communities, including MBTA adjacent communities with no service within their borders, to have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily zoning by right. We are required to have a zoning district of at least 50 acres or multiple districts, five acres each, adding up to 50 acres. At least one of those must be 25 acres. This district must allow multifamily housing by right. Multifamily is defined as three or more units per structure. The minimum gross density will need to be 15 units to the acre. The zoning needs to allow a capacity of at least 750 multifamily units by right. The focus of the statute is on what the zoning allows, not necessarily what will be built, and there is no requirement for towns to produce the housing associated with the zoning or to provide infrastructure to service it. Land needs to be developable to count, as in it cannot be floodplain, water, wetlands, or public land. The zoning can't, the zoning can't restrict age or number of bedrooms, although it's fine for a project to be age-restricted on its own. The district identified for 3A compliance is 101 and 104 Lowell Road. These two properties already have a high concentration of multifamily housing and already have the benefit of byright zoning for this use. This area is a good candidate for our suitable zoning district, but it would need some changes to the zoning in order to become compliant. This includes clarifying our site plan review bylaws, so they are unambiguous that multifamily zoning is allowed by right and is not subject to the discretion of a special permit, and also by raising the byright number of stories allowed from the current four stories to four and a half stories. The way the new zoning could cause changes to be made to the, to these properties after the proposed rezoning would be, one, if the existing developments or portions of those developments were raised and replaced under the new zoning. Two, if additional height were added to the existing buildings. Currently, the two sites are a mix of three, four, and five-story buildings, with the five-story buildings having been allowed with a variance previously. In the proposed scenario, all new buildings could be 4.5 stories. 60 feet is and would remain the maximum height, as it is now. Currently, the total number of units permitted on the site is 908. Under the proposed byright zoning, the estimate of units would be 812, and the main way that the lot acreage would be increased would be with redevelopment. Though one change in correction, it's not a change to the law, but it's a change in my understanding and interpretation of it. The heights could be added on to. If, if they can't be, the footprints of the buildings cannot be expanded right now without seeking further special permit, as they would currently, you know, need to anyway, but they could add in height with 4.5 stories being the byright height that is proposed rather than, than four stories right now. That there is potential that if a developer wanted to, they, they could replace a building on the site or more buildings and build upwards. That would be up to the owners of the site. So that is one difference between what I presented last time and what I'm presenting tonight. There is a possibility of building up slightly. Whether or not that would happen, we don't, we don't really know. As I mentioned, there are four buildings on the site that are currently higher than that, they're five stories because the owners sought a variance and received one from the zoning grant deals. So the reasoning for this proposed approach is that the properties are already zoned for multifamily housing. This is a response to what the CPC was anticipating would be the greatest concern about the legislation. This proposal does not identify a new area of town in which to introduce new housing. It's a relatively conservative approach that would anticipate the smallest possible impact. Some towns have used the 3A rules as an opportunity to create new housing districts or go beyond what the state requirements are, or to introduce new affordability minimums where none are currently required. And I, if there is any interest in doing this, my recommendation would be to first meet what the state is requiring to do and then potentially revisit the effort to change, expand, or add to those districts. There are two basic changes that would be needed to the district zoning in order to achieve compliance. The first would be to clarify that our site plan review bylaws are like a special permit procedurally, but do not require an actual special permit or any discretionary use permit. Town Council has clarified for us that while the site plan review process was treated as a special permit for years, it is not in fact a true special permit because there is no discretion allowed to any board to determine use. We have been provided language by Town Council to clarify this provision in our bylaws. The actual procedure for site plan review would remain exactly the same as before. The other bylaw change needed would be to make four and a half stories allowed by right, as I mentioned, rather than four stories. The maximum height would still be 60 feet as it is today. And this change would be needed to comply because at a four-story threshold, the calculated total unit capacity would fall under what we are required to plan and zone for, which is 750 units. And currently, four of the buildings on the site are permitted for five stories through variances issued. To date, we have completed the state's required compliance model to demonstrate compliance of the proposed district. We've drafted zoning bylaw amendments which have been reviewed by Town Council. We've submitted the town, the compliance model and the draft zoning bylaws to the EO HLC and the zoning bylaw amendments to the Attorney General's Office for a draft advisory review. We've received feedback from both offices that minor edits are needed for full compliance. This includes further clarifying the wording in site plan review language and adjusting our compliance model to ensure the 100-year floodplain is fully excluded from developable area. Those two things have been addressed and are reflected in the draft bylaws that you'll have in your packets tonight. We believe at this time, no substantive changes to the draft bylaw or the district would be needed in order to comply. So we believe we would comply if, if the zoning proposals were passed as they are written. Next steps would be having a required public hearing for the zoning change, which could, depending on the outcome of the discussion tonight, we would determine what the appropriate timeline would be. If we are going to June Town Meeting, it would just, it would need to be before that point. The zoning articles would be submitted for the upcoming June Town Meeting if, if everyone agrees to that. If the Town Meeting vote in June were to be positive, we would then submit all our materials to the state applying for compliance of the district. This must be done by the end of December this year, but our goal is to have our compliance conformed months before this deadline. It'd be our preference to, to do it sooner so that we're not waiting, you know, until the very end. The major consequence of not complying with the new statute would be becoming ineligible for funding for three of the state's competitive grant programs, MassWorks, which the town has relied on and expects to continue to rely on for a number of infrastructure projects, Housing Choice, which can provide funds for capital and planning projects, and the local capital project funds, which provide housing authorities with a portion of their funding. Compliance status may also come into decisions about other grants, as we've been seeing over the last few months, at the discretion of state staff. And additionally, the AG's office released an advisory of March, in March of 2023, clarifying that the legislation is in fact a mandate and communities don't have the choice to not comply and simply forego state funds. It's just a quote from the AG's advisory, which we previously provided. And this is just information from the state's website showing North Reading's location within the MBTA service area. And this is, as you can see, and it's not provided by the state, North Reading is categorized by the state as MBTA adjacent community. This is a, there's a set of rules for communities in each of the categories, including where suitable multifamily district must be located and the number of multifamily districts it must allow in that zoning district by right. Because North Reading does not have any land area within half a mile of a train or bus station, we're not required to have our district within half a mile of transit, as many other communities are. However, the state has said that we are still required to have a district. That is the end. My presentation.
So I'm gonna turn this over to Attorney Ickman. There were questions that we had that I think you hopefully have some answers to for us. And then after Attorney Ickman, I will ask my colleagues for their questions and comments, and then we will turn it over to the CPC for questions and comments.
Anything suggestions?
Yes.
Since this is a zoning bylaw proposed change, then we hear from the CPC, because I don't necessarily have anything to opine on. I mean, I have opinions about it, but I don't know what's being proposed or what isn't being proposed, or what's proposed is being proposed. So I think I'd like to hear what the Planning Commission is planning on doing, and then I'll react in tone.
Yeah. After the attorney speaks?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
After the CPC, you said you're gonna ask the colleagues first and then the CPC. No, I wanna hear the CPC first, and then you're gonna hear from me. That's right?
Aren't they, aren't they proposing that district?
Yeah, that, this is.
Are they proposing it or not?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Well, no, I mean, no. That's what tonight is, deciding whether it's going to be proposed. That's the whole.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the recommendation is to move forward with it, or not move forward to it, or what the timing's gonna be, what they're suggesting. Yeah. And then I would like to, I'd like to be able to concur. Yep.
Hopefully, we're going to get questions answered by Mr. Ickman that we all had, and then we will go forward from there. So hopefully, we come to some kind of an agreement tonight of what we're gonna do. Up in consensus. Attorney, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you, as the board is aware, some questions came out in an earlier meeting that we had about this. They were given to me to address in writing, I've addressed those in writing, and should have been provided to everyone here, they should have them. I'm going to just briefly go through those and summarize, if you have questions after that. The first question that came out of this was, is North Reading an MBTA community? The answer to that is yes. The following question is why?
Nice.
Is it an MBTA community? The simple answer to that is because the statute says so. The statute we're talking about is Section 3A, the MBTA zoning act. It defines MBTA community as certain communities that are already designated in the MBTA statute. One of those is, I think it's, what's the wording? Other served communities. That's a definition already in a different statute. So this statute says, here are the MBTA communities, this one, this category and that category, and they're already in a statute. So all it did was collect those from here, take them over to here and say, all you communities are MBTA communities. So it's defined by the statute. It isn't, it's not a determination that someone made outside of, you know, what, you know, what the MBTA does, that's already been determined. So some of this, I think, maybe I'm going a little far, maybe a misnomer about, well, why are we an MBTA community? We're not served by the MBTA.
Correct.
And that is the question, but what the state has determined in the zoning act is, you are benefiting by being close to the MBTA, you are benefiting from the MBTA services. And the point of the zoning is to create housing in places where transportation, mass transportation, is available. So when you're adjacent to it, it's presumptive that that kind of transportation is available. Whether that's practical or not, I mean, that's a question, but that's, that's not a determination for the towns to make. If you look at the map I had up earlier, you'll see that the western half of the state doesn't have to comply. Why? They're not anywhere near a community served by the MBTA. So the focus of this act was to incentivize, I should say, multifamily housing in areas that are dense and serve or adjacent to MBTA services. That's the point of the act. And that's why North Reading is designated, even though the MBTA doesn't go through North Reading. Goes through Womerton, goes through Wondell. So the next door, presumably, people who would live here would travel to the MBTA. So long explanation of why North Reading is an MBTA community.
I guess if anybody has questions or comments, maybe we'll take them a question at a time.
That's fine with me, absolutely.
If anybody wants to ask further about that question. Mrs. Mani Pelli, did you?
I got a different question.
Oh, okay.
I have some presentation. I think there's a question that keeps repeating. I think you addressed it in your answer, but there's a question that keeps repeating of why should we have to comply when we're not receiving the services? And what are we paying to a membership for if we're not getting bus or any kind of services like that? You kind of touched upon that, but there was also an issue clouding that pure definition in the statute, which we've all looked at at this point, but that, you know, why should we have to comply? And we don't get their services, and how are we a part of this? To begin with, what are we paying for? So there was all, I think, a lot wrapped into the question of are we an MBTA community?
Madam Chair, I think, I think I can add a little color too. I mean, we've had to research it a little bit, so, and it might just help everybody understand, because I didn't understand it, but the, the, the MBTA was created in 64 from the Acts of 64. And at the time that they dissolved the MTA, so the old MTA went away, the MBTA was created. The MBTA communities were created in those Acts, and that became 40A or 161. The towns that were listed in there originally, and it's kind of in a strange way, they had like, I'm not getting into specifics, 13 and then 55, whatever, they were all served by the MBTA or what was the MTA. So whether that be rail, light rail, you know, cable car, who knows from 64, bus, everything like that was what is how you became an MBTA community. That basically stayed that way almost since, from 66, when that law became enacted, all the way till 2021. It was just, you had, you were in it, you got assessed, and you, what was interesting too is, there's still a provision in the law for a community to go into or become, they have to vote in a Town Meeting, council, everything to do that. They can become an MBTA community. The, the ability to step out was taken away in 66, when they created that. So originally in the Acts in 64, they had a way to get in, that was Section 14, and a way to get out, or the opposite, sorry. Way to get in was 15, and way to get out, 14. That went away again when they enacted the actual law. So there is no way to get out. So, and then if you have the service, you would get assessed. Now, for instance, we have a net service in a long time. In the last 28 years since 2003, North Reading has paid or been assessed $2.2 million, and I'm assuming we paid it, Mike, you know, but that's been our assessments. Now, before everyone gets all upset, the last four or five years, the assessment has been rather small. It's been like four grand. And I think that there's some, for whatever reason, there's a jump in the 2024 assessment of like 14 grand, but it's still not that much. And, and to council's point, you know, there is, there is an argument to be made, we're benefiting, around 8% of, I think, our town uses, you know, some of this transportation. So I, I do see the argument there. But I thought it was important to give everyone the history, and then from 21 is where things have just really speeded up. So with 3A, and then 3A just had the, you know, three things we're gonna take away from you, and then they added them more. So we can get into that more, because I know council's gonna go over that, but really, it's been nothing until 20, until January 21. It's been just an assessment tool and a way to manage land for the T in order to build rail, to build stations, whatever. You were part of that community, they could take land, they could assess value, all that stuff like that. So I hope that helps, but that's amazing.
Thank you. So, open this to the board.
Only because it was brought up through Madam Chair. So our assessment has been to the MBTA over a period of time. Two things I'll just add. So first, that fluctuation over the past five or six years, it probably is, maybe even a little bit more, is due to our use of the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority for some limited paratransit services. So it was sort of, we were incentivized to talk with them because rather than pay the MBTA for no paratransit services here in North Reading, we could then pay MVRTA for a limited amount of paratransit, which has decreased, it's sort of increased and then during the pandemic decreased and is really limited now at this point. And the other thing is just through my conversations with folks over the years, our assessment was, for a number of years, around $125,000, I think you probably saw that, Mr. Redlove. Prior to the change in funding for the MBTA, it was a much higher number, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I've heard 3, 4, 500, $1,000, and that number came down when I think some sales tax money was diverted to the MBTA 25-ish years ago, Mr. O'Leary probably knows. So just to share that since it was brought up.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
So based on his commentary, and then your clarification.
We are an MBTA community.
So, and then, so hold on, I'm just trying to, so.
So, and then, so hold on, I'm just trying to, so.
Sorry.
If that, so one, two, and then three then is that there, there's other avenues where you can argue about the merits of it. Unfortunately, like that, that's, you know, it's kind of like the Massachusetts version of an act of Congress. Like it is what it is. So that leads me to believe then the question is, was that presentation the best way to get it done so we can meet this requirement? Or are we still, I'm just trying to figure out, like, and I want to hear from all the CPC. Are we still questioning whether or not we have to comply after those two things? Because I try to listen to, but I'm, that's, I'm just trying to, I think that's the point.
We're going to, we're going to address, we're going to stay with the question. One by one, and then we can go further after that into other.
That's question number two. The next question is compliance.
That's like commentary, though, that's not really, well, that's people's opinion on it versus the law of the requirement to comply. This is a, we've heard from Danielle on this since before it was even enacted. We've had, we've been addressing it publicly. It's not a surprise, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone.
That we are an MBTA?
Yes.
Well, I know, I should be surprised. But nobody ever told us why. That was, we were never getting the answer of why. So that was, that was the why.
Thank you, that was pretty, that was really good.
Yeah.
And, and Madam Chair, what, what I see from the town meetings, I see any kind, any time an MBTA comes up and poor Danielle goes up to give an update, you get two or three people from the audience saying, why are we still paying?
Right.
And, and so a lot of people don't know.
Right.
You know, why we're, why we're still paying maybe, or why we're called an MBTA community. So, and that's why I stopped at, at just that. And I know counsel has the other questions too. So I'm not, I could go on, but, you know, let's, let's take them, I guess, one at a time.
One at a time, yeah.
I'm sure.
All right. So any more questions or comments to that first question that attorney had addressed? Okay, so we go on to the next one.
And number two is, does North Reading need to comply with the MBTA's community zoning requirements? Multifamily housing? The answer to that is yes. And it's frankly a simple answer because the statute simply says, these towns shall comply. Shall is determined to be mandatory in all but limited number of circumstances typically, where there's some administrative decision to be made. Sometimes shall is determined to be directory, not mandatory, but. Whereas statute in particular says, you shall do this. And then it says, here are the penalties. In almost every instance, that means you shall comply. So reading the statute, it's a language in and of itself. The answer to the question is yes. Every town that's an MBTA community must comply with the statute. Now, sort of based on the next question, well, what if we don't comply? What happens? Well, the statute tells us some of the penalties. The recent lawsuit with Tom Milton is the attorney general saying, that's not the end of it. There are other penalties if you don't comply, asking the court to impose those. We don't have an answer to that yet. It'd be interesting, but we will wait and see how that case plays out. But I, to the simple question, is it mandatory? The answer to that is yes. One, I just, one thing I just want to point out. Sometimes the discussion tends to get lost in the designation of these areas, the MBTA communities. Why are we, what's the MBTA mean? Why does it matter? It's really the name the state has given to the area in which they want to create, incentivize multifamily housing. They could have called it something else. It's not really based on, I mean, there's a basis here. We talked about service access. But if you, you know, say, well, we shouldn't be an MBTA community, we're outside of it. That doesn't mean, given your proximity to Boston, that somehow the state's going to say, oh, well, your exemptment is required. We need multifamily housing, but you're exempt. Essentially, if you drew a circle, the state said, this is where we need it. They could basically include every community. In this instance, they've at least given a basis, which is that it's serviced by mass transit in this area. That's what we're going to use as the basis now. They need more, it could expand. That's two. Before, before we continue.
Before we stop the questions here.
Yeah, we'll stop, we'll stop. I think Mr. Redlove had this.
No, I'm just going to say, the biggest thing about this is, yes, we have to comply. If we don't, we're not eligible for all these different grants that might be existing now or in the future. And that's, that to me is the most significant penalty of all. So, yeah, we have to comply. And there's substantial money reasons why we should do that.
Thank you. I think it's, you know, this, this, these parcels seem like a layup. So you have to understand, I'm not necessarily pushing back necessarily on the lot of the parcels. But I am pushing back a little bit on, on, on the shall and then what other penalties because it originally started as three items. Mass Works is the only one that we've gotten money from out of those three items. In the past six years, we've received $200,000, each $100,000 for the sewer project design. We got nothing in '23. I'm not sure if we're even eligible for anything in '24 because I know, I think, I was recalling it was design related or whatever. But that said, the other programs, they added one in May, one more in May, a fourth. And then the EOCLC added 13 more. Again, like, if that's not enough, they kept pounding it in, here's, here's even more. In review of those, we haven't received a dime on any of those ones. And someone can raise their hand and tell me I'm wrong. But these are not funds that the town of North Reading, with our kind of income and our, our town is going to get the dime in. And also to put it in perspective, even the $100,000 to every one of us in town, a property owner, is about $20. And yet, you know, we go to these town meetings a couple of times a year and just bam, 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 one article after another, 650, 1.2, we bought the land there in center. I mean, there's no problem. That's way more than the $20. So I'm not threatened personally by the state telling me they're going to take away $100,000 from me. Now, there could be future Mass Works things. I agree, I agree. It could be bigger than $100,000. So I'm, I'm not naive to think that there could be money out there. But I just want everyone to put in perspective, the threats are very minor to this town. That's just number one. And the second thing I'd like to raise is where did, where did suing come on, come into the picture? It was, if you don't comply, this is what you're going to lose. Okay, we knew the penalties, that's the language of the law. It's only been in the last year and a half that the attorney general and the state has put the screws down on everybody and said, you must comply. And they've, you know, there's a few communities that have pushed back. There's more than a few communities that publicly have pushed back. And if you go online, you can see it. That's the reason for, you know, for the 17 items now because, or penalties, because towns are pushing back. So I asked counsel too, as it relates to this, just number two, is I noticed, you know, in your opinions, there was nothing on home rule, 43B. And I'm just curious what your opinion is of a town, this town, any of the 351 cities and towns, using home rule, which was, it's, it's a constitutional amendment. So it's, it's a constitutional right for towns of using home rule to fend off the state in trying to enact zoning laws. What's your opinion on that, counsel?
Through you, Madam Chair. My flat opinion on that is that argument will not succeed. Absolutely not succeed. Home rule sometimes is misconstrued as providing towns with a certain power that's equal to or superior to the states. That is not correct. All power that towns get comes from the state. What home rule did, before home rule, we had something called Dillon's Rule. And what that said was, the towns have the power that the state expressly gives them. Home rule said towns can enact any bylaws under their general police power that are not, don't contradict state law and aren't expressly prohibited by state law. So in other, in other words, the state didn't tell you, you could do it. You can now do it as long as it doesn't conflict with state law. In the home rule amendment, the state reserves the right, the general court, to pass any law that's beneficial for the Commonwealth and impose that upon towns. That has not changed. Home rule did not change that. So home rule is not a defense to state legislation. If state, right now, if the state says shall, that you can challenge that in court and say it's beyond the state's police power authority. I don't believe that will be a successful argument either. And I'm stepping out a little bit here beyond where the answer is. But there are a number of examples of this already in the zoning act. If you look in Section 3 of the zoning act, you will see instances where the state has already said with respect to zoning, towns and cities will not zone against these uses. Churches, schools, daycare centers, and agriculture. You cannot prohibit those, you cannot require a special permit for that. Those are uses that the state has determined are so important that they're not allowing towns to say, no, they need to be available in every town. Multifamily housing is starting to reach that point. And if you read the state's case in Milton, you will see a lot of background about why we have, according to the state, a housing crisis in Massachusetts. This is the first step to try to deal with that through state legislation. There could be other steps, but this is the first one. And it is giving towns some say in how that's going to be addressed. In other words, you can put it here, you can put it here, you can put it here, rather than the state saying it's allowed everywhere. We're not doing that to this point, but if it gets, it's, it's possible. It's been done with other uses. So the case law on home rule, the case law on the state's superior power in zoning as well as that, it's been in place for many years. It's not going to change. The only question would be, is this an exercise, proper exercise of the state's police power with respect to, can they, could they say, you need to do this multifamily housing, is that important? The evidence I've seen is they can. Milton is challenging that, that's one of the bases for, he sees further challenge. But again, I don't, I don't foresee that, that part of it will be successful.
So what about that 1973 handover case that said zoning is inherently a local power?
That's the case. I'm actually citing for all those rules by home rule. That's the case. That's a 43B case, talk about how home rule applies to zoning. And you will see cited in that case, cites in all of it, says it hasn't changed with home rule that the state still exercises ultimate, I forget what the word is, but ultimate authority over zoning. Towns can adopt zoning bylaws, but the state can basically say, this is how you're going to do it.
Madam Chair, and I just want to point out, with counsel, what you mentioned, we'll point out that section in 3A, that's for towns to change zoning. We're not looking to change zoning to keep something out, like change our zoning. The state's asking us to change zoning. There's a big distinction between that. And to, to case in point is, the mere fact that we, and along with, I guess, 177 other towns, must vote as a town to pass this zoning bylaw, to enact it, shows there is that constitutional right in place. The state can't change our zoning for us. We have to do it. So it's a self-inflicted wound when a town changes its zoning. There's no one else to blame but the town. You can't look back on the state and say, they made me do it. We have to do it to ourselves. So that's just, that's how it works in the state. You can call that home rule, you can call it whatever, but that's how the state works. The state can't come in and change any town's zoning. And again, I'll say again, as I've already said, that reference that you're talking to is about towns enacting, you know, anti-development type laws and, and, you know, the 40B, anti-40B kind of things, which I get, you know, doing that. That would be, you know, that, it wouldn't be a right for a town to be doing that. So I just want to make sure people understand, it's, the state can't change their zoning for us.
Mrs. Menipelli? I, I did a lot of thinking, yeah, in the process of that, you know, during the home rule petition too. If that was, if that might have been an ability for a city or town to circumvent. But when it comes down to it, this particular mandate, this legal mandate to us is because they, they didn't have faith that cities and towns would implement it on their own. And I also think, I, I think as much as that might seem to be an overreach, I don't think that doing the home rule would pass muster because it's the legislature that mandated it upon us. And they're the ones that would have to ultimately approve the home rule petition also. I don't even think it would get past the initial municipal legal review level that it gets through the state. But I, I feel, I, I don't feel, I, I want to hear more, just if it's okay through you, Madam Chair, from Mr. Gobert on the loss of the funds. I'm hugely concerned when I originally were in the law when it originally came through. I know what you mean by, they had these particular grants that they listed. But then they sort of vaguely modified that and said, and whatever else. And, and that really is a big concern because even though we may have, you know, applied for and not necessarily got some of those grants, we may be in line down the line for some other, I guess, tips, tips funds that are pretty substantial if you get in queue. And I don't know if we've actually analyzed how many times we've applied and been denied for those. And maybe that might make a huge difference in terms of, maybe, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily on the fence, though I feel like, Mr. O'Leary, I do want to hear your opinion on it because you've been married to this for so long. But I don't necessarily think North Reading gets a whole heck of a lot of grant funding because we're perceived as a community that doesn't need it. And I think that, I think that's more compelling to me of an argument than, and I did do a lot of thinking and reviewing and I've been able to say cases. Because even the community that I work for is a different regional transit community. They're not even in that, but they're still, but based on the mandate of the statute, they're still an MBTA community because they're giving a, giving a real policy. So I'm just wondering, and this is taking you, I'm not necessarily asking you to do a rundown, but if I could, Madam Chair, ask about the, whether or not we've applied, how many times we've been granted the funding? Because I set aside the home rule here because, and anywhere really, because it's the legislative, the legislature that ordered it, just like 40B. And I don't necessarily think 40B is bad, just like I don't necessarily think this requirement is bad, especially based on the work that's been done to find a district that's going to have really no impact. I was hoping maybe, are we in line for anything else other than those grounds? Would that be okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, yeah.
Oh, go, I'm kind of going from the top of my head. But we did apply for and receive a $3 million Mass Works grant for water system improvements in 2018, I think it was. So, so right around the time we went from buying some of our water from the town handover to buying all of our water from the town handover. So that was about half of a $6 million infrastructure project that we.
Sorry, Madam Chair, what, I couldn't hear you. What, what grant?
It's a Mass Works grant, a state Mass Works grant. So we had applied, I think, twice for that grant. We didn't have a private development partner, which is a key component to an application. We knew we didn't, and we knew we weren't going to qualify, but we felt it was important to apply anyway. And it was either once or twice we applied, and either the second or third time we were awarded. And it was in tandem with the Pulte development and our belief that we were going to need improvements to our water infrastructure system to get water over to the development. improvements to our water infrastructure system to get water over to the development as well as the existing development at Edgewood. So that was one grant that we received. Again, I think we applied either once or twice before being awarded the second or third time. The Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, 2015, I think they funded a corridor study of Main Street. That was a much smaller grant, $25,000 or less, if I remember correctly, maybe $15,000. So that was something that we utilized funding at that point in time. The, I'm just reading the bottom, local acquisitions for natural, natural diversity with land grants and EOA grants. So I believe we applied for and received funding under the predecessors of those programs for the acquisition of Ipsutriver Park. That would have been in the mid 1990s. And I think in even a precursor, 10 years before that, I'm kind of looking at Mr. O'Leary for Hillview. When we acquired the Hillview, it would have been, used to be called the PARC program, P-A-R-C was the spelling of it. So either those grants or their predecessors or subgrants that are within it are something that we have utilized at different points in time, although in that case, not recently. And then just with the Verita Mass Works, we have been seeking assistance multiple times from Mass Works for the wastewater program. Got some, I'll say, small grants in the context of a $130 million project for designing and planning. As the board knows, we sent out letters looking for private development partners to see if we could apply for a Mass Works grant to offset a potential wastewater project expense, but haven't nailed down anything just yet. We're hopeful, oh, we do have at least one lead. So that's sort of from memory, just about our reliance on the programs, you know, over, over the years. I think, I think we'd love to have a 25 or 50 million dollar Mass Works grant to offset the wastewater project we've been talking about, but I think in reality, we're probably talking no more than five or maybe 10 in, in terms of the size, based on what we're likely to get for a partner. So that's sort of off the top of my head.
Attorney Ahmed, Chapter 70 School and Chapter 90 Road, are those protected?
I apologize. Say that one more time.
The, the Chapter 70 School and the Chapter 90 Road funds, are those protected? Are they, are they unable to touch, I think, they've mentioned those, but I didn't think that they would be able to touch those.
That's, Madam Chair, that's interesting. I have not heard that. I mean, I'm more familiar with Chapter 90 frankly than Chapter 70. Because a, I mean frankly, it's one question whether the EOHLC really designates certain state grant funds and add them to the list. It's another question whether the legislature could go back and say, all right, we've got a Chapter 90 statute, but we're going to change it. So I, I don't think you're ever, you know, completely out of the woods.
Okay.
I just love this, because of all the budget stuff, this, it's been quite an hour on the Chapter 70, but we only get $30 per student because we're considered an affluent.
Oh, right, right.
I mean, there's a lot of things that, that blend into that formula that gets reported by the school. The enrollment's down this past year, it's based on last year, the enrollment, the number of kids, the number of students who require special needs. There's a whole bunch of things that factor in at the end of the line. It's because of, you know, our property values actually is the reason why we're, we're an affluent community, so we only get $30, the minimum. I don't know if that's wrong, but that's what it looked like to me when I looked at the, the grant. Mr. Gilberto?
Just to clarify, I think the $30 is the increase year over year.
The minimum.
That, that, the minimum increase. There's a baseline number that's much larger than that that I don't know of yet.
Yes.
But Mr. Gilberto, weren't we told that, that was going to be depleted because of the low poverty level?
What, we're, we've, we've known for a number of years that the Student Opportunity Act, which is what changed the funding formula, while at the same time putting more funding into the programs, education programs, that we were not going to benefit from that, that it was likely going to slow the growth of state aid in favor of districts that might be more economically need. That, that is my understanding, yes. I don't know that it ever stops growing altogether, but I know we are already at a spot where we're getting minimum increases of that $30 number.
But that would be, I, I think that would be rather remarkable if they, I mean, who knows, because it's big, but I think it would be, it would be, it would definitely be challenged really if they started pulling Chapter 90 and Chapter 70 funds away. I mean, that, just because they, we didn't, we didn't, I, I can't say that they would or would not, because I was a little surprised that there was a lawsuit over what Milton did, but, but I didn't read and I'm, I'm assuming Milton's counsel did a cross claim for declaratory judgment because of the language of the statute reads. But I don't have a read, it's, I don't know if they did.
Madam Chair, so I think counsel hits, hits on it. So for the, for the layperson, if you could explain, so what is the legality of the legislative branch passing a law that has three items in it that are punitive, and then an executive office just comes up with a bunch of, 14 other ones, and they start, also the AG starts threatening? So what's the legality of that if it's not in the law itself? How can that be enforced?
It is in the law. It says and other, and other.
It says, yeah, it says and other.
So it's in, it's in there.
In the original language?
It's pretty, I mean, anything, pretty much anything else.
It's a catch-all.
It's a catch-all.
I mean, that's kind of like what I do at home.
Did you want to answer that, Mr. Ahmed?
I do want to make one point, Madam Chair. Just, Mr. Reddloff had a good point earlier I wanted to address. He was still questioning why this, how the state could impose, enforce a mandate that says, that says the towns have to pass its own bylaw. He says, how can the state force the towns to vote to pass the zoning bylaw? And that's a very good question, because generally as a rule, state government can't force a local legislative body to take action. So that's one of the interesting questions unfortunately about Milton's legislation is, what are the remedies? Assuming that the Attorney General is correct, that there are other remedies, not just withdrawing funding, that we can impose the zoning, if we can't tell town meeting to vote, which I, I think is correct, I don't think they could tell in a press town meeting to vote, what else can we do? And I think unfortunately, if you read that, the problem is that, as I've said before, right now, the state is saying, this is a problem, we're giving you towns direction on how we want you to address it. We're basically giving you a sort of a, the parameters of how you're supposed to address that. But the lawsuit says is, if you don't, here are the other possibilities, and they would be more drastic.
Madam Chair, can the, can the counsel just point out in the original law that it, where it says the other? It's right to your right, that's the actual law. It's not the, okay, I just want to make sure, it's not the bulletins and the additional things they're coming up with, because those do say other.
Right.
I'm talking about the original laws.
I did, I, I did see another two. It may take me a second to find this.
To your right, it's a lot simpler, because the law's really simple on the sheet I got to your right.
It has been amended too. We have the most, you had a slide that showed the most recent, most recent of the law. This may have, it was most recently amended in 2023.
It's a necessary step.
And other things that the discretion deals with?
The law is not, the law is not, I think I have, but that's, I can't.
In the clarification.
It's clarifications, it's not done on the executive side. It's not from law. I just want to be clear, you know. Yeah, I, I do not see it at the moment. I will have to look for it. I remember it doesn't seem that language as other people.
I'm just going to go on a limb, Madam Chair, and say it's not in the law, but it's, it's definitely, just as the 14 other punitive grant programs, discretionary grant programs, they've added all this stuff, they've added language, they've changed the website language in, in the last two years. So it's really hard to get, for a citizen or anyone to get on the website and get kind of the truth, or at least get a baseline of what the law is, because they keep changing it. Not the law, but they keep changing all the guidelines. So that's all I'm just pointing out is that, and I agree with what counsel said, that they would just, could go back into session and change it. So, so, you know, just being a realist about things, if they wanted to, they could just go back in and add all these things if they wanted to. So I don't know if people have the uptake for that, but it's definitely something they could do.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask a, this is a really short comment, because here's what I'm, now I'm understanding this more. So I thought I knew everything the state can do, because I, with the 40B, because I've been helping them with the 20 Elm, and that, that was very interesting. So what it seems to me is, this is like in reverse, where the 40B is where the state pretty much gives the right, if you meet X, you know, criteria to steamroll anything local, for lack of a better way to put it. So I don't understand, because it's so vague, I agree. That's all I'm learning here, that this is, this is so, you know, this, it's vague. And I think it's purposely vague, because then you can do whatever you want. It's like, it's a cute trick. They do that in securities laws too, the SEC. So pretty much why they're setting up, and rather than give the developer, if you identify a parcel that would fit into this without an affordable, mind you, by the way, that's the best part, that there is no, this is, this is a one-way track to million-dollar condos, which, that's a separate argument. But I don't understand why the state didn't just do that, to get around what you said. You can get around all that hope, you can get around all that stuff, because I think the, the question now we're saying is that, now the state is the authority, if the state is the authority, and that's again, a different conversation from the day, to make the, for lack of a better word, instead of where 40B, they give a developer the sword, here they gave us the sword to put in first. So it's already, that now that I'm not trying to, you know, before, I know when, I gotta watch my words, but, so that's what I just, I just don't, that's what I'm not understanding. And again, I'm not, I'm not giving the merits of the law or any of that, it just, it, it just seems clear to me that it is vague enough where the state could pull this off, and I think it was purposely dumb. And that's my fear. That's pretty much, but that, that's just where I'm at so far, that, you know, I haven't heard anything that makes me feel better about us having a remote chance of stopping this. Thank you.
Just if I may address that, I liked your analogy to the FCC, because it kind of tells you, and this gets lost sometimes, if you want to see what the basis is for the FCC's or another agency's jurisdiction, you can consult the United States Code, and you might find a paragraph about this thing. And then you look at the FCC regulations, and they'll fill this room. Those regulations are still law. And a lot of times what the reason that gets, we have that is because it's so difficult because of the subject matter, because of the politics, to address everything in, in a legislative bill. Say, we're going to give the authority to the executive branch, we're going to give you guidance, we're going to tell you what you need to do, what you have control over. Here it is, you pass regulations. And that's what they've done here. They've given the EOHLC, they called it guidelines, but nonetheless, say, here, here's what we want you to do, here's what we're mandating, you, you know, you promulgate guidelines to show how that's going to be done. And that's, I mean, essentially that's how administrative law works. It's, it's a difficult subject frankly. I mean, and we hear this all the time, why, why do we have rooms full of regulations? Where did that come from? It does come out of legislation originally.
Mr. O'Leary?
I, I just, for the ability to pay attention home, something, and that's, this really is analogous to 40B, you know, where the state said, you need affordable housing, cities and towns, you need affordable housing, you need a threshold of 10%. If you don't meet the 10%, there are consequences. To Mr. Reddloff's point, you know, it didn't require communities to pass zoning to allow. It gave them an incentive to do it, but a lot of communities did not do it, have not done it. And the consequence of that, I think this is what the Milton case is going to prove, and probably what the AG is going to win, is that the state can impose an override local zone, can force the communities to do things that they don't necessarily want to do or have chosen not to do, and the legislative party has either intentionally ignored it or intentionally turned it down to do something else. So that, so it is analogous to, to the 40B, where there's a threshold, there are guidelines, and you're either in compliance or you're not. And if you're not, the appeal is to the state. And what the state does is they then impose upon the community, based upon a developer's plans.
They change the rules to what?
They, they change the local rule, they ignore the local rule, so they just override it, say, it fits the guidelines as the law established, you're not in compliance now, so therefore, you get, I look at this as a very similar situation, because we're in the MBTA community as such. You know, just keeping in mind, I hate to be historical about things, but, you know, as far as the MBTA assessments, long before I got on the board here, which is 1988, one of the biggest gripes was, I mean, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is a lot of money back then. You know, my colleagues then and my colleagues even now, you know, over the past 30-some years, complained, fought, been successful in reducing those assessments, but it didn't get us out of the community. Didn't get us out of the, the sphere of those communities. So we're in it, you know, we, we're on that mailing list for a reason, you know? It wasn't by mistake, it wasn't by design, and it wasn't like, oh, I'm sorry, we've been in this, this community for decades, since like 66 or more, or even before that. So again, we weren't on the mailing list by mistake. We got the letter, we need to comply. Again, my colleagues here, when it was first thrust upon us, and actually, you know, I don't even recall the discussion on this thing here, I never heard from our legislative delegation as to consulting us that this was going to include us, which is unfortunate. But at the time, you know, my biggest complaint, wasn't about the, the thrust of the law and the need for affordable housing and for suburban communities to do their part in order to meet the housing needs. That, that wasn't the complaint. My biggest complaint was, there is no way that this community can succeed and do so. We can't build that much housing here without sewage. We're a septic system community. We can't support those number of units anyway. So that my biggest complaint was, here you go, you thrust this upon us, and we can't comply even if we wanted to. Fortunately, I became a little more educated, and you know, this is, this is a long, bald piece of legislation. You know, the state is looking to do something over a, a long period of time and accomplish this over a long, long period of time. That's why they're saying, you know, you can put the zoning anywhere you want. And what Danielle has come up with is a fabulous solution to a problem, and we're in a very fortunate situation here in North Reading because of what we have out here, our little state property, where, you know, you can just zone it, and it would get us into compliance, and we don't have to worry about it being thrust upon us in some other, some other fashion. So my biggest concern is if you don't commit to compliance with this, and I believe counsel's telling us, he goes, he doesn't think Milton is going to succeed, and what I've read, I tend to, tend to agree. But I don't want the state to come in here and rewrote, rewrite our zoning bylaws and force upon us where these districts are going to be where compliance is going to take place. And I'm afraid, and again, this is what they do with 40B. They do it on a base, case by case basis. A developer comes in, puts forth a proposal which doesn't fit our zoning, doesn't fit our vision as to what we sort of want to see our community to be, and says, you get, I can see this down the road being the same type of situation, and that's what we need to be concerned about.
They change the, they change the percentage factors.
They change the, they change the percentage factors in history.
Yeah, so, so to me, right now.
Just, can I come, just to, what they mean is that literally on this 40B currently, on the 20 Elm project?
For all pertaining to that.
We, yeah, but the very specific thing is that we were giving, one state agency gave us numbers to back us, when they realized, like, a month later, that they screwed over the other state agency. The other state agency, literally, rewrote the rules on the fly, changed the rules on the third quarter, so they could rule against us. So this is, this has literally happened to us in real time, so.
And you also have to understand that, you know, these laws were not passed in a vacuum. They were done for express intended purpose, and, just like 40B. And when you have to appeal to the state, who's the enforcer of the law, right, who is responsible for the enactment of the law, you're going to a body, I don't care who the agency is, whose express intended purpose for being there is for affordable housing. How are they gonna, how are they gonna rule against themselves and against the intended law, and rule in favor of the community that's trying to fight it? You know, we had safe harbor, but then we don't have safe harbor. You know, it's, it, you know, it was clear to me earlier, and we're talking about Elm Street, that it was, it was a no-win situation. Win the battle, lose the war. You know, you can't win it. And I'm afraid with this new piece of legislation with this, you hear, we're gonna be in a very similar situation, so that we need to face it head-on, and come up with some sort of solutions that assist us in complying. And what we have now is a proposal that gets us in full compliance for years to come, it appears, years to come. And in the meantime, we can address the issue as we need to, on a more timely basis, and more thoughtful basis, knowing that the legislature can't change this at any time, to make the consequences more serious, and make it move much more quickly than we maybe want it. So as upset as I was when this piece of legislation was passed unbeknownst to this board, and other communities, too, which I find extremely baffling, we didn't, we weren't asked our opinions as to how we, how we, how we would want to address proposed legislation, would we be willing to, you know? It was now just forced upon us, and now we're in this situation where it has to be done. Again, non-threatening is in a far better situation than a lot of other communities, because we have the proposal before us, which really puts us in compliance, gets us up the hook for a long period of time, and gives us a lot, a lot more time to give a more thoughtful approach as to how we can even expand upon the need for multifamily housing in the community. So, to meet the regional needs. And again, the state's looking at this, again, long-term, long-ball, they're not forcing it down your throat, per se. They're saying, listen, just go ahead and resort it, we're not looking to have you go out there and get permits now, just make it by right, the people can do it. Now, if you don't have the infrastructure to do it, to support it, okay, that's not gonna happen yet, but eventually it's gonna come, you know, and that's okay. So.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, no, but, so again, I appreciate the, the concern, I appreciate the effort that's been put in as far as looking into the genesis of this whole thing. Not that it solves anything for us, other than it more clearly explains, you know, why we're in this situation. But, you know, if we're talking about non-compliance, not moving forward with a proposal that Danielle has mapped out for us, I, I'm at a loss as to why we would waste the taxpayers' money filing suit, not committing compliance, being sued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Attorney General's Office, for what I don't see, and what we're being advised, is losing proposition. We can voice our concerns, and I think we should tell Representative Jones and Senator Tuck, and I don't even know how they voted on this. I don't know how they voted on it. You know, I don't know how they voted on it. Even if they voted no, you know, they lost, it's the law. So what are we gonna do? You know, are they gonna start cherry-picking with other communities and other state reps and senators to get some of these communities out of this? Okay, and if that's the case, let's get ourselves into compliance right now, and then we can change the zoning back, back when the legislation is changed. But for now, I just think we need to comply. We have an opportunity to do so. I applaud your efforts, and I think we should just move forward.
So, Mr. O'Leary, you hit on a lot of things there, but first, I'll start with the 40B. There's a distinction between 40B and what, the 3A. 40B, if you will, was a carrot. It was, it was to tell towns, it was to give the builder, developer, the ability to get around certain things, if they would, you know, would propose, if they would give, what, 20, 25% affordable housing, you know, as part of the project. Now, that's a carrot, and, and shame on the town, really, if we're not hitting the 10% threshold. So that's, to me, a little gentler way of doing it, so it leaves the town completely in control of their fate. If you don't maintain 10%, that's on you, the town. We didn't do that. The second item was to the 40B here for 20. That's, to me, that wasn't a change of percentage, as Ms. Pelley said, it's, that's an interpretation of what is affordable. Now, they, you know, one group said group homes is affordable, and the other group said no, you know, and lowered the whole thing down by, you know, almost 1%, 1% or 2%, it was a pretty significant amount, right? So that wasn't, you know, that wasn't changing the rules, in my opinion. That was just, we got some bad information from one group, that said, yeah, you can include that. I think the 40B, the 20 Elm 40B was a hail mary, and, you know, and, you know, we've paid a substantial amount of legal fees, I'm sure, to do that. It was perhaps maybe worth it, because that is a scary, 62 is gonna be adding 200 units, if that's what's gonna be added, it's gonna really impact 62 in the morning on a commute. But that said, I, I think, what my point is, and you've heard me to kind of passionately make the point, it's not about this first lot. I'm making the point to the group here about the next one. And Mr. O'Leary, I do not agree with you that this will take care of us for years and years to come. The state wants to see if everyone is compliant here, and so far, other than Holden and Milton, probably, we're gonna, we're gonna be part of the group that are yes, we're all gonna be compliant, and they're gonna come back. And so I just want to be on record as saying, they're gonna come back, and it's not gonna be way, way off in the future, it's gonna be with something else. Keep in mind, too, that carrot to try to get the 10%, we should still be trying to do that. This development with the 750 required, the 908 existing, has zero affordability. We can do affordability if we want, but with a built-out site, RE with 908 units, we're not doing affordability on this zone. So where else are they coming from? They come from ADUs, ADUs aren't affordable, so they're not gonna be from ADU. So we have to think about our production in this town, if we want to fend off 40Bs, how are we gonna do it? We have some ideas, but in general, I'm worried about the next one. I'm personally a yes vote on this, I want to be clear. So if anyone's getting the idea that I'm not a yes vote on this, I'm a yes vote, I've made it clear over the past two years with Danielle and Warren. My point has always been, more so with Warren, is just, I don't like the heavy-handedness of the state, the way they're pushing towns around. You're seeing it with Milton and everything, the notices, the things that come out on a weekly basis from the AG's office. I watched a talk show recently, two weekends ago, on a Sunday, that just had the AG going over the MBTA community, and it's just kind of shocking, like, it's really shocking as a resident. And I guess I was left with the impression, what's next? And that's about it. But again, I'm on board with this, this particular.
Let me just clarify as far as what's, what's really transpired here, as far as the 40B. You know, that development out there, the 406 units, Lincoln Properties at Edgewood, right, that was originally proposed, commercial industrial, but originally proposed as far as for housing for condominiums. And some of us were involved in the negotiations with the developer and the state, said, you know, why are you doing that? Because they thought that's what the town wanted, it would be easy to get things through. There were some of us who said, we're not opposed to rental housing there, with 25% being, with 20, 25% being affordable, which would, how does 40B, being rented, 406 units, all the units count, even though 20% are affordable? We went from 2%, or less than 2%, to over 10% in compliance with that one developer. Now, there's a drop dead date on that, too. Probably within about a decade, that goes off the books. There were also some of us sitting on the board here when we were talking with Pulte, you know, there would be an affordable component to it, but the give-back to the town would have been 12 million instead of 18 or 20 million. But the deal was made, the deal was gonna be regular, no affordable units in there. We could have decided to take less, because it's a numbers game as far as the developer, they don't care what they're gonna build, they just want to build it. You want some affordable aspect to it, okay, but what we're gonna pay for it is gonna be, not 30 million, we're gonna pay 18 million. So it was just a numbers game. So we in this community, you know, do have some control, and have had some control over the years, and we've made some good decisions, and we've made some bad decisions, or we've made some decisions that have consequences associated, I won't say they were bad, there are consequences associated with it. And we're working with the state, within the state guidelines, in order to get this done. So I see this as a very similar situation, and I see that, again, that the wheels of government work very slowly. Believe me, I've been around a long time, I haven't seen much, you know, it goes very slowly. So this whole MBTA community piece of legislation, they're gonna get everybody into compliance, but they're not forcing it down your, say, okay, non-threatening, you have the opportunity to do it, this complies, because you ran it through the state, this complies, and again, that takes care of us for a long time, years. Because by the time they have to find that they have to effectuate some significant changes to force communities to do more, that's years. And I agree with you, we should be doing more, to look down the road and say, really, what do we think the compliance is gonna be on this, along with 40B. I don't believe we've done enough on 40B. We still should, because those 406 units are gonna fall off, and all of a sudden, and every time we built Pulte over here, we built 500 units, you fall 50 units behind. They came in looking for a few more units, unfortunately, the zoning board of appeals listened to a few of us, who said, you know what, at least make them comply with those extra units that they're looking for, 20, I think, they ended up being 15%, was going to be affordable. So at least it holds us even with the number of units that they were looking for additionally. But for 500 units they put there, we became 50 in the hole right after that, because we didn't have an affordable component. But collectively, we, we made a decision. So yes, we have a lot of control locally, it's just what's our appetite to comply, and if we don't comply, it'll come back and bite us later. So this 40B thing is gonna come back and bite us again, and again, and again, along with this new legislation. So again, let's get in front of the curve, let's buy ourselves some time, get it to compliance, and, and I don't disagree with you. They can be strong-armed, strong-handed, again, administratively, the law allows them to administratively take care of things, and put down the guidelines, which becomes the law. So let's, you know, get that crystal ball out, let's engage our legislators a little bit more, get them more engaged, they, they should have been consulting with the local, not just this board, but all those communities.
Danielle did make, and I was present, did make a presentation to this board very soon after, giving the board a heads-up as to this was coming, and I remember a number of you were really concerned, because Danielle mentioned that there are the three different things, and one of them being Mass Works, and I think, I saw a lot of people on, on the, on the board that were, that were kind of shocked, and never heard of it. So I agree with you, I didn't, I don't think, maybe Brad Jones and others gave any heads-up to the town, but we were right on it, and I should give more credit to Danielle, the planner was right on it, giving an update of this is coming, and these are the steps, we need to do this, you know, by this date, this by this date, and I was, I was right next door, over on that corner, when we did the presentation, it was probably, what, two years ago, Danielle?
Keep in mind, we were anxious about that Mass Works, because we weren't that far off of the $3 million that we did get through the Mass Works.
I hear you.
You know, which was significantly helpful.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Let Mrs. Danielle listen. Yeah, because we, we did, we are getting great information, protect claims of what's happening, but we actually weren't asked to participate as a community until after it was implemented, and they were promulgating guidelines.
It is correct.
And then we worked with Danielle, and Danielle did a mound of work, a mountain of work, analyzing this, and how the impact, and preparing all this. And she came back to us a number of times on that, in our public meetings, and asking us to participate with those commenting guidelines. So I, I just wanna throw this out there, too, because again, in thinking about this topic now, and why end this particular sign, knowing what you said, Danielle, that if, if we use this as the district, or an overlay district, we cannot make the development be affordable. We can't say that it just has to have no age, no, no anything, just multifamily, right? But we could, right?
Towns have the option to do up to 10% affordability required in these. If they want to do beyond 10% affordability, we just have to do, like, an economic feasibility analysis to show that it would not be uneconomic for a developer to do it, because I think what they're trying to do is just encourage housing, and so if we make so much of an affordability requirement that could potentially detract from that, whether that's a good idea or not, I won't comment on that. But we have the ability to go up to 10% mandated.
So that's what I would like to see in this proposal, because my other piece of it is, because we've been talking as a board about the live-in place, or remaining in place, and how this, this, if we do that portion of it as affordable, at least the minimum amount that we're allowed to, then maybe, maybe when the, you know, maybe when it is redeveloped, someone can put a multifamily house, if your in-laws can live in one parent, can live with them, there's no issue with it, or they don't have to have a permit, they can just do it. And it kind of meets that, you know, one, a little, in a small way, not immediate, but it meets in a small way, the goal that we've set forward on that strategic plan. It's more likely to result in a developer coming by and saying, hey, you know, this is, I'd like to buy, like you said the other day, I'd like to buy your, buy out Edgewood and redo the whole thing, make a lot of money, but maybe that's the developer we've been waiting for, on our store, I don't know. But I think it meets that, in a, in a small way, if we, if we hear the whole proposal and it incorporates that 10%, that I think is a great.
I, I can hear.
Mr. Hicks. I'm sorry, I skipped you a little bit. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. As been mentioned a couple of times, we are in a unique position to have a piece of property that's already built, and that actually meets all of the criteria we need for us to be, for us to be compliant. And to Mr. O'Leary's point, I agree, correct. We would be just as well off to finish this and be compliant, because it really is not hurting us. And the possibility of them tearing any of those buildings down in the near future is pretty low. I happen to know that Redding is battling with this, because the area that they want to use, right next to their train station, is all big, single-family homes, and the people are ballistic. So, I mean, could be, and you would think that, you know, Redding with all of it, with this, having its public transportation, would, you know, be able to deal with this better. But they're not, but they are not making you build it, it's just, and, and, and again, the long game, that's what they're, what they're doing is they're, they're creating a situation, getting as much land as possible as they're dedicated to multifamily, and then they're letting it lay, realizing that as time goes on, these places will get built, and they will get some more housing. Housing is huge right now. The, the state has also put, and I'm not sure what the amount was, like, a billion dollars aside for help, to help people build. So they're serious about it, and they're not gonna back off on it, so, so I would say that we take advantage, again, of the work that was, that Danielle has done, and that we, we do, be compliant, and let the other towns start the fights. And let them pay the attorneys, and let them, and let them go through the battles, and see if there's, if there's a win someplace, because I, I believe Attorney Ackman's correct, there's not a win in this right now.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. I was gonna say something exactly to that point, Warren, is that, while I'm supportive of the measure overall, because of the plan Danielle's come up with, I do worry, as Mr. O'Leary said, that they're just gonna continue to augment this law as time goes on, and while I know it makes a little more pain for you, Danielle, I wonder if we are better off postponing this until October, say, and I'm curious from counsel, if the likelihood that we have a ruling in Milton, or Holden, or somewhere else, that may change our perspective, that, like, do we have any incentive to push this through in June versus October, as a town?
If I may, Madam Chair, right now, we have a pretty complete
If I may, Madam Chair, right now, we have a pretty complete set of rules, we have everything, we can show compliance, we're right there on the doorstep.
But that's not gonna change by October.
Is that right? Everybody here's been saying, wait for the next thing to happen, wait for the next thing to happen. I say we get in compliance and be done with it, and then, and let, and again, let the other towns battle it out.
Especially, Mr. Chair, there's 130 other towns trying to get in compliance with the current rules that they've come up with. Do you think midstream, with six months to go, they're gonna change those rules on 130 towns?
How long was it after they brought this out, that they started adding on all those additional?
Penalties, penalties, they haven't changed the compliance.
I think we can go one at a time.
Sorry. They are still continuing to augment their penalties and fight that in court, but they're not changing the actual, the limitations of the law right now, in terms of our compliance.
All right, so if I may, Madam Chair, just waiting till the last minute, I don't feel is a good idea, okay? And I think that, since I don't see us changing much of what we put together, since we can be compliant, I think the sooner we put this to bed, the better off we are. Again, and then we can watch what happens in the rest of the state.
So, about Attorney Eichmann's?
Yeah, just to inform the discussion about timing, the Milton case is scheduled for argument in front of the SJC in October. So if you're gonna wait, and your decision is gonna take a little time, they're gonna move, but you'll be really gaming a deadline if you wait.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna rely on what other communities are doing. We have to decide. I'm all for moving this forward. I'd love to hear the, if it's ready, if the zoning, the bylaw is ready, and if the CPC is recommending that affordable component to it, and I wouldn't, I don't quite frankly care what the other communities are doing, I care what we do for others. So I, I mean, it'll be interesting to see, based on all the points that you've raised, which I think are great points.
I was just gonna say, affordable component could be put in any time.
I was gonna say a little bit more than that, but...
Okay, well, go ahead. Well, actually, I was just gonna say, the affordable component could be put in at any time. So to, to, I wouldn't muddy the waters here, I would try to keep this clean.
But the guidelines allow for up to 10%?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it's not muddy in the waters?
They have to.
No, okay, so, so again, why?
No, 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 10%.
No, no, 10% is fine.
Yeah, that's apparent, because that's a tough search.
Yeah. I agree with Mrs. Manu Pelli, if we could just, up to the guidelines, if a 10% doesn't mess anything up, then put it in there.
No, no, it's, it's, we're supposed to do it regardless, whether we put it in or not.
I was just going to say that I wouldn't be too concerned about adding the 10%, since we are, our understanding is that we are allowed to do that. Anything beyond that, we could always explore in the future, at a future town meeting, and make sure that we're still compliant, and do whatever analysis the state requires us to do. And I, I just wanna touch on this, the CPC did discuss the issue of possibly putting in an affordability component to this, a few months ago, I think it was. And there wasn't a strong consensus at that time, so they kind of had just decided to leave it for the time being. That was a while ago, hasn't been discussed since, so having this discussion now, I think, is very helpful. And then, just to respond to Ms. Manu Pelli's question, as far as the bylaw, the draft bylaw that has been put in the packet is what, is the draft that had been proposed. And the only thing that would be missing from that, that, you know, I think we've talked about tonight, would be that 10%.
Yes, yeah. Mr. Suda.
So, I just wanna also just get on record, but Mr. Rudolph, I agree that I, this I support, and again, it's with the CPC and the, because at the end, I'm always, I think everybody's heard me say this for, since I got on the board, that I'm really, I really try to respect what other elected committees do, like, you know, unless they ask, right? It's like, but I think, then your point, Mr. O'Leary, if we fast-forward the tape, fortunately, I do agree that it's gonna get augmented, because I think Massachusetts is just gonna end up with a lot more million-dollar condos on the East Coast. That's what's gonna happen here. The 10% is fine, but you're gonna get 100 units where 10% are affordable and 90% are a million. And that's how they're gonna be. That, that's, like, let me, let me just fast-forward the tape for you, and this is a, I might become a real estate developer at this point, because that's what this is, okay? Let's like...
You know how some people think you are?
Yes, I do, at this point, I own half the town. Depending on who's trying to discredit me, I own the street.
The street, concrete.
But in reality, that's what I think. So I just wanted to get out there, that I do think, my fear that it's going to get further is because, just like most things, the law is gonna have unintended consequences, and then it's gonna be like, wait a minute, did you see all these communities that we made them do this a decade ago? All they did was put up a lot more stuff that is way too expensive, and it did not solve it, because here's the thing, you can put up all the multifamily you want, if it's expensive multifamily, you still can't afford, you're not helping. The person that can afford that much now doesn't need the state to help them, they can do it now. Our housing crisis is because it's unaffordable multifamily, that's what we have.
That is true.
You know, that's why you take a two-family in Somerville that was built, you know, in the Stone Age, make it a condo and sell half for 900,000. This law is not gonna help that. Actually, they're so, like, to a theater near you, in 10 years, we might get a really shiny new toy next to Edgewood. But with 10% being affordable, whatever that term means, I've seen what affordable means, the number's still pretty high. So that's what I think. I think that's the, that's my fear, that we're gonna have to come back here, and, you know, if my wife hasn't thrown me out of the house yet, maybe there's a slight chance I'll be on some form of public committee to help out. And we're gonna be talking about how, wow, now the state is using some key word we didn't know about, like a commer somewhere that says that, oh, by the way, now you need to designate another part of town where we need to match it for 100% like affordability purposes. So that's what my fear is, that overbuilding will happen, because the way this law was written, it doesn't really, it's not gonna address the issue. Because again, the person that can afford what I think is gonna get built, can afford it now, they didn't need the state's help. It just, the state's just gonna make it a little easier to, you know, maybe get something nicer in a town that typically maybe wouldn't allow more housing. So, but I do agree, I don't think this is gonna happen tomorrow, I, it doesn't exactly, developers aren't exactly beating down our doors to put up pretty much anything at this point, so.
Just, the real question is, do you wanna fight the state now, or do you wanna fight it later when they build?
That's pretty, yeah, pretty good.
You take it now, and you fight the battle later on, and like Warren said, there'll be other towns that are doing it. If you look at the list of all the other housing other towns have to do, we're very low on the priority list. Other towns are much higher on the priority list, especially those that are being served by community and MBTA. We are not gonna be the first ones that go after. So you wait, you wait, you wait, and if some town becomes so objectionable, you can go the Milton route and fight it to the nail. But that is not a battle we have to take on now, you need to say yes to this in the heart.
So I'd like to make a comment. I agree with Mr. Rudolph, I mean, Danielle's put a great deal of work into this, like Mrs. Manu Pelli said, and I respect everything you did. I know I was very, well, at the last meeting, but it was not towards you. What you've done is definitely, we aren't feeling the pain that other towns are feeling. It's a, it's a great plan that she's put together, but I just don't trust the state, so there's that. You know, they'll change the game as they go. Once we comply, now what happens? Now they change the rules. Oh, well, you had a vote, you complied, so now we're gonna do this, because you can't do anything about it now. That's what scares me.
Yeah, you can fight, you can fight.
And at that point, you know, I think, and I think we've got a lot of communities now who are much more aware as to what's going on here. They're gonna hold their legislative delegations, far more responsible to be informing, informing the system what's going on, and if there's gonna be new rules promulgated, you know, they're gonna hear from us. Our state, our state's gonna hear from us, and then there'll be formal petitions put forth to change the laws, to make sure that the guidelines aren't so restrictive that it's gonna get forced down the throat, and you're gonna have a group of 75 to 130 communities going, yeah, I'm with them. As opposed to with Milton right now, I think you gotta lose a battle right now. The battle to be fought is later on, and watch out what's happening with the promulgation of rules and change of guidelines moving forward, as to how they force, force communities to comply, more to comply. So, you know, we really need to just keep our legislative delegation on edge here. You are responsible to let us know what's going on here. We'll let you know when things are happening, that we're hearing about, as far as promulgation of rules coming from the state agencies, and that, you know, they're overstepping their bounds at this point, and stretching it, we believe, which implies legislative action to curtail it, you know, and I think that's the way it's gonna happen, Warren. But at this point...
You pay the tax, or you dump the tea. You pay the tax, or you dump the tea.
There's gonna be a lot of towns, there's gonna be a lot of towns, likely, there's gonna be a lot of towns that don't make the deadline, because of the battles they're having internally and everything. And they're gonna, and, and as I said before, they're gonna fight, they're gonna fight the fight, we can just watch, see what happens, because we're not being hurt by it.
And Warren, maybe they need to, right? You know, we don't need to.
We don't want you to.
We don't need to what Danielle's put together.
But right now, though, that's what, that's what I am afraid of. But right now, we don't need to. But once we comply, now do they sock it to us? Because now we comply, and that's what I don't trust.
They're not gonna comply.
I don't think so at all.
Maybe a 40, 50 town don't comply, and maybe Mass Works can give us their money for like one year while they're not complying.
More funds are gonna become available.
There's gonna be lots of...
We're good, just kind of, 130 million.
I don't trust your legislative branch, but can I just tell you to put some trust in your judiciary branch?
Can I be helpful?
Because you, we do, we could have the same ability, hopefully, to clear, to imagine, overreach, I mean, we, we have been wanting, I mean, that, I'm sure there'll be, there'll be thought, there is a...
KP Law, how many communities do you represent that are in this pickle?
I haven't counted in this pickle, I mean, we represent about 130, but then we have a lot in the western part of the state as well, so they're not involved. A number of them, I mean, I'm reviewing bylaws right now, they're going on warrants to satisfy this, towns near here, it's a sizable number, but I haven't counted.
Yeah, I know you represent about a third of the communities in the Commonwealth, so they're not giving us advice in a vacuum, and they're not just looking at it from a not-threatening standpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've only covered two questions, is there anything else?
I was just, I was going to ask...
And I think, I think these are more like just kind of quick checkoff ones, the rest of them, but, you know, just to kind of clear, clear the air, just so we get through.
Yep, Madam Chair. Number three, I think we talked about in number one, please see response, how, what makes a community an MBTA community, we talked about that, it's designated as such in the Number four, this is the, in the statute, there's a 0.5 mile distance requirement, your zone has to be within 5 miles of the transit center, that's the statute. The MBTA guidelines promulgated by the EOHLC have exempted towns like North Reading that aren't close enough to be within, they can't, they don't have enough land within a half mile of transit station to satisfy the requirement. So they're exempt, they're completely exempt, you can put the district in North Reading anywhere you want. And that's, that comes from the guidelines, the guidelines that are promulgated, given the authority that HL, hate that thing, EOHLC was given by the statute. You promulgate guidelines, they promulgate guidelines, it's a, North Reading and similar communities are exempt, so that's why, that does not apply to us. One before Lowell Road, Martin's Landing, the last two questions involve those two, heard some discussion about this before. The questions involve the 55-plus requirement that Martin's Landing has. That's an existing development, subject to the permits that were granted, and as we discussed, the 55-plus requirement was imposed by the developer, it was not imposed by our zoning bylaws. So there is, zoning would have no effect on that for a number of reasons. Number one, we, zoning is imposed, number two, it's an existing use, changes in zoning bylaws, for instance, let's say we said, you can't have a 55-plus requirement, that wouldn't apply to an existing use, certain, fathered-by-state law. So it would not apply, zoning can't strip that, you can't, can't change that. So I think that more or less addresses those, addresses those two questions, but it didn't.
Mrs. Manu Pelli, a legal question, I just have a question on the proposed zoning. When you said, is it 60 feet maximum height?
Yeah.
And five stories?
Four and a half, yeah.
Five stories, right?
Four and a half stories.
Four and a half, does that mean like two families?
Martin's Landing has five, but they did, they got a variance for that there.
Right. And what is the, what is the height, like a height for a four-family or a five-family, or what is the maximum, I don't know this, I'm just curious.
You know, four is the only, you mean?
No, in building terms, you do it from the ground?
Yes.
To the, to 60 feet?
To the peak.
So could that be like a six-family, or is that too big for...
If they're really...
It's a kind of area, so it's one of eight, I think you're asking, right?
Yeah.
So 60 is the max, if you go with a flat roof, you can build more, you know, with variances, but you can build more, you have to solve your roof, like Ed Wood, that's why they have three right now, and they're nearing 15, 48.
There are building codes that require a certain amount of head height in rooms and so forth, so you, you have to work backwards and everything. And there's things that will change it, for example, if you were far away from a hydrant, you want to put a sprinkler system, and that heats up a little more ceiling space. And the type of heating you use, if you got ducts instead of, you know, while the heating does, all different kinds of things that will affect how much room you need for each level.
What's the typical?
Well, now everyone's building nine foot, you know, because everyone wants nine foot, but it don't happen with you. If you're sufficiently affordable, you're building a level of eight, you know, because it's kind of the common framing, you know, it's all wood framing, most of it's.
I have nine, I prefer eight, I'm sure.
I like mine too.
But could it be like a four-family in terms of height with a 60-foot?
Yeah, if you're a four level, you're going just straight up, like four family, you're going just two floors.
So when you say 4.5 stories, I don't understand how that gets done.
It could be this, or it could be this with dormers. If you do this, it's half the number of units that you could fit in a full story. If you do this with dormers, you could potentially have the same as a full story. It's just you couldn't have a flat roof all the way across. I didn't know that they would accept four and a half stories in the compliance model, but they did. I put in 4.5, and it spit out the number we needed, and that was that.
So we've got, all the questions are answered?
Yes, there, the last one was just, could the, the Martin's Landing property be included in the district? And yes, it can, because the zoning we're supposed to adopt is prospective zoning, it doesn't matter what's there now, it's what can be built. So, yeah, you can include frankly, any land in there. The only, the only limitation is that you can include ineligible land.
Wetlands.
Which is wetlands, because they won't, you know, screw up your capacity calculations, but Danielle's already made that calculation, so as far as this goes, yes, you can include that.
And just a comment too, on, on Edgewood, which is, it's an older product, so there potentially in the future could be the likelihood that they systematically take down building here or there, but I think we talked about at our last meeting, and Danielle, you sent out just an update after, they, they could add another story, I mean, they're only three, three floors, there's 11 buildings, they have 12 units, so you're looking at like another 130, and that range would be like a, you know, which is unlikely, but it could be, you know, it could happen, but I know...
They also, their maximum zoning is today is 60 feet and four stories, and it's been that way since it was built, so they haven't gone up yet, since they were first permitted.
But they could, you know, so that's just, you know, like you said, full disclosure, they could.
Yeah, they could.
But I think it's also important, a lot of people think, and I do, I mean, I have a wife on the school committee, but I think of schools and everything, but just for the record, I think it's 405 units, Edgewood?
Edgewood is 406.
406. So they have 67 students in the school system right now. So when, if you talk to Michael Conley, you talk to anyone, you're, when you ask, what do you use for a figure for apartments, and they use 0.5, well, 67 is even like, that's half or even under that percent, so it's really low, is what you get. So if you did add 130 to Edgewood, and it really wouldn't be a major impact to the school system, based on the statistics. So I just wanted to dispel that for anyone that's worried about schools.
I have to ask this, so, so even if, as we're considering the proposed bylaw, we add that 10% component into it now, that if Edgewood decided to build up, they wouldn't have to comply with that, because they're already, they're going to come under them. And this is, is this an overlay proposal, or is this just a zoning change?
It's an overlay. Now, the 40R zoning that's on that property now, well, first the 40R was put on, and that was an overlay, and that required the affordability component. Years later, when we rezoned that whole area for the Martin's Landing development, we, we also rezoned that property and made multifamily by right anyway. So they, they stick to their affordability, because it was in their regulatory agreement, but that had a time limit anyway. So it has had another overlay on it that allows for multifamily by right with no affordability component. They have had that in place for a while now.
So that would not get rid of that, Danielle?
I'm sorry?
If we added that to the article?
Well, they could choose, I guess, which overlay they were going to comply with if they developed.
I'm not saying I propose to, I'm just trying to help you.
Right. I think you could, you could choose one. You could go by whichever of the three overlay districts you wanted to do. I think all three would be, as long as you fully comply with all of, all, all of the provisions in one of them, you get to pick whichever zoning. I mean, that is kind of the problem with having an underlying zoning district and three additional, four additional overlays on it. I mean, it's confusing and it's not great, but I haven't found a better solution yet, so.
No, I was just, I just wanted to verify that, just because we're talking about that development.
All right, so we are heading onto nine o'clock. We
I have one other thing to bring up. It's not, it's, it's more regards to sewer, and, and I'm not going to go, go there, go there. But let me just, I just want to, I just want to point out something in my findings for this property is, in the calculations for this property, it's more just a headline. When you calculate the 908 units by the 247 gallons per minute, okay, you're getting roughly 44% of the entire flow that you're going to, you're looking to permit. So if you're looking to permit 503,000 gallons per day, which is, I believe, what it stated, you're, if you run that 62 line, which is going to cost about $1 million out of 126, 29, or wherever it is up to now, I'm just giving you a heads up that, I don't know if that's the smartest thing. You've got a fully built-out development up there. They have, at least on the Pulte side, a fairly new plant system. Edgewood, eh, but it's still their problem. I don't know why we would run a line, a 7,600 linear foot line from Main Street up north in, onto 62, when there's, you're eating up all our capacity. We have so much to do down Main Street, and potentially on Concord, and this is if the citizens, you know, want to, want to have a sewer line. I'm just wondering, I'm just telling you what I found in my calculations, and
Kind of getting off track.
And I think, you know, it's just something you want to take a look at. That's all I'm thinking.
Should we make a wish?
It, it just relates to this development that we're about to change the zoning, and that's why I bring it up. I just bring it up as a
Okay.
The zoning act.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just as an aside, based upon, as a private citizen, having been somewhat familiar with what's being proposed in relation to tying, allowing, running the line down and tying it in. Now, part of what you're looking for is, we, we know what the capacity levels are, and we have anticipated usage based upon progressive growth along the way. In addition to that, we also have a capacity for changing the permitted use, and the capacity up at Great Alara Sewer District is enormous as far as their capability of taking more affluent from us. So all we'd take would be some special legislation to increase the permit, while they have the capacity and are willing to agree to increase capacity up there, so there's no limitation.
Fair enough. I was just pointing out what we were promoting.
The capacity is there, the capacity is there, the ability to increase the permitted numbers are there, and the lines that are being proposed can take it off.
Okay, I think we should, I think we should progress this
Yep.
...for net sense. So where, where are we going from here? Mr. O'Leary?
Would you, should I ask my board to vote that they, to ask Danielle to put this on the, on the town meeting, Warren?
Please.
Would you, would you be Our board?
No, CPC.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be good, but also, what about the affordability aspect of it? I don't see any habit including it.
It's a consensus that we want to put that in.
Is it a consensus we want to put?
We have a meeting on Tuesday, and, and it is
You don't want this.
Put it on that.
Yeah, you're missing a, you're missing a member.
And, and you mentioned the, the affordability, maybe how we mentioned that. I mean, we should have had a conversation, bring it up on that on Tuesday. The meeting is Tuesday, so.
Yeah, they have a meeting on Tuesday, so they, one of their members isn't here.
We don't
Yeah, I do mean tomorrow.
One of their members isn't here.
April 9. Not April 2nd, we're not meeting April 2nd.
April, oh, by the way, April 9, not April 2nd.
Oh, it's not next.
When's, when's the warrant closed?
That was the one we moved, because there was nothing on.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah, when is the warrant?